To order, the purpose of your meeting is to hear a comment on the 2018-2019 Small Cities Community Development Program application process for the Concord Meadows community.
Should I use this?
Yeah.
Is it on?
Yeah, it says on.
Test.
I think it's on.
These are yours.
We're on.
These things are on.
Thanks for the wake-up call.
Jeff, can you turn these down a little bit?
Yeah, that's what we asked for the volume on the inside.
Just handle, I can see.
It's like school over here.
You stand in front of us and it'll pick it up.
If I stand right here?
You're fine.
There you go. How's that work?
That's good.
Awesome. We'll just do this. This is fine. I'm breathing. Okay, okay. All right, so the purpose of this public hearing is to obtain citizens' views on the town community development and housing needs to review and discuss specific project activities in the areas of housing, economic development, community facilities, which could be part of the town's application for funding this year for 2019. That's kind of the HUD. Basically, just so everybody understands, a small cities program is a federal funding program that comes to the state of Connecticut. Some communities, if they're more than 50,000 people, get a direct grant from the federal government. Small cities like Madison can apply to the State Department of Housing to obtain community development block grant funds. These block grant funds need to go to low to moderate income target areas. We have done, last year we did an application for the town, and we were successfully awarded $800,000 for the Concord Meadows development. That grant is being used to basically upgrade the windows and do several conversions of the bathrooms, tubs, to a roll-in shower for ADA accessibility. This year, we're going to do another grant to go to the next step, the same development, Concord Meadows, to change, right now, there's electric baseboard heat in this development, which is extraordinarily expensive for the tenants and for the facility. We're going to convert that into high-efficiency heat pumps, basically mini-split systems that will have AC and heat, and that'll significantly reduce costs, which will maintain the affordability of the development. The work for this, if we're awarded this grant, we can actually ask for up to $1 million and a half dollars this year. We're probably going to be asking for somewhere between $8 and $1 million, mostly because that's all we need for the work and to be as competitive as possible. We want to make sure that we win. So, some of the other issues that, you know, all of the work will be done with the residents in place. We don't have to move anybody, there's no temporary relocation. Obviously, you know, there will be workers in the units, things like that, so we will have to, you know, work around people. There is, we're looking at most likely a six-to-nine month construction period for the work, so if we get awarded next spring, summer is when we will be doing it, which is basically the same as we're trying to do the windows right now. We're negotiating contracts, and hopefully we'll be starting in the next month or two. We basically, so you understand who the roles are, I am a consultant that the town has selected to help work on this application. We work on the application on behalf of the town and the housing development in Concord Meadows. There's obviously, we have an architect and a development team that helps put together the plans, the specs, and the application, so that when we get the money, we know exactly what it's going to cost and what the next steps are. We then, once we're awarded, we go out to bid and get competitive bids from various contractors. And unless there is any, we don't anticipate any program income. Some developments that use this grant money for, you could get program income. This development, we will not, so we won't have to plan for the utilization of any program income. And that's pretty much the program. So, if anybody has any questions, that's what we're here for. If anybody has any comments or would like to speak.
Nothing?
Elaine Reitman. I'm president of the board of Madison Interfaith Residential Community, which manages Concord Meadows, and I would like to express my appreciation for the support from the Board of Selectmen for the prior year in which we were awarded a grant, and for ongoing support where we would, of course, like to obtain a second grant to further enable us to provide upgraded housing to the residents, to the approximately 100 residents at Concord Meadows. So, and we think it's a very worthwhile cause, and the residents are extremely appreciative of what is being done. Thank you.
Andrea Aaron. I'm also on the board of Concord Meadows, and I would also like to voice our appreciation for your support. And I really feel that the residents could benefit from upgrades in their heating system, which is just so burdensome for so many of the residents there that are on a real small income. And with my understanding that there would also be work on replacing the chairs that are on the stairs for second-floor residents that can't walk down the stairs, and sometimes the chairs there now are broken. So, my understanding is that they were going to replace, replace them.
Yeah, that's part of the plan.
Kathy Clark, I also am on the board of directors, and I'd like to thank you for what you've done, and it's really, really needed. And it's just no sense in letting it run down. We have to get forward.
Thank you.
Kirk Barnaby. If, to the extent that individuals have been burdened with their utility bill because of the expensiveness of the electric heat, how has any shortfall or hardship been dealt with? Do you mind?
Well, residents, there's a proportion of income, of net income, monthly net income, that residents pay for housing, and there's a utility allowance included in that. So, they pay no more than 25% to 30%, and we have some residents, extremely low-income residents, who get a subsidy as needed to cover the costs. So, not only are we talking about, but there's a limited number of subsidies available. In other words, it's not unlimited, and it goes to the neediest residents in order of need. And that's how that works. So, not only does this, well, upgraded heating units provide more affordable and economical heating, but it also means that residents do not have to buy their own window air-conditioners, which they now must buy and have installed through sleeves. And some of them don't do that, even though air conditioning, as we now know, is a very important part of controlling health for elderly people in the summer when it gets very warm. But baseboard heating is just not efficient, and heat pumps are 30% to 40% more efficient. So, it will save energy as well as money, in other words, for people.
Interchange is, is it okay?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Okay. No, I understand, I appreciate that, but to the extent that, but where does the funding come from for the subsidies?
Comes from the federal government.
For the subsidies?
Federal government, for the, all the funding, basically, except for what residents pay and rent, all other funding comes from the federal, direct from the federal government through a USDA program, because at the time that the development was built, it was in a small cities program funded by the United States Department of Agriculture for smaller communities. Mortgages are held by the USDA, in effect. In addition to the board of directors, there's a manager in Hartford who represents USDA and who actually looks at all the books and acts as a financial controller. And we follow HUD regulations in terms of admissions, leasing, all policy follows HUD regulations.
Interesting, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you. I guess we'll adjourn the, we should take any action, Laura?
No, as long as you all agree, you can adjourn at 6:59.
Yep. All right, thank you. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
From March 25th, Dylan Cancelieri is here to lead us in the pledge, Eagle Scout.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A couple items, and then we can get to you.
Great, thanks.
Number two, approval of Minutes 12.
Agreed.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three, first electors' comments. I do have a couple of things to say. Number one is, I think everybody's aware of the fact that we had a car stolen over the weekend that was driven out of town and caused a crash and a death up in the building. And I'd like to talk about that a little bit, because I think that while this is becoming a bigger problem along the shoreline, we're also part of the problem. If we don't lock up our cars, we're going to keep getting stolen. So, I just wanted to read something that she sent me, from an article in the Hartford Current today. It says, "A report prepared for the general assembly last week shows that while motor vehicle thefts have declined in Bridgeport and Haven in Hartford, they have significantly increased in the surrounding suburbs over the last decade. Thieves in towns with fewer than 25,000 people jumped nearly 20% over the last 10 years. Two weeks ago, Weatherfield Police Chief James Setrin, who's president of the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association, told the Legislature's Public Safety Committee that juveniles are committing crimes because they now realize they won't be arrested. It doesn't matter if they drive like maniacs, because they know they're not going to be punished. This is an epidemic happening statewide. There has to be some sort of deterrent, or else they're just going to keep driving crazy." And while he said, "There doesn't seem to be a single reason for the thefts, police say some teams are in it for the thrill, recording car thefts, joyrides, and police pursuits for broadcast on the internet." I don't know if you realize that the police officer that actually was passed by the cars that were stolen, she was sitting at North Madison Fire Station. They went past her into the circle, and they went around the circle three times to try to get her, chase. Okay, so, this is not, this is really serious stuff. Other times, thieves park the cars in their neighborhoods and use them as personal vehicles until they're located and recovered by police. But again, they don't get arrested, so, you know, that's part of the problem. The salient point of the article is that there is one consistency, police said. The thieves usually don't break into cars to steal them, rather they look for suburbanites who leave keys or fobs in the vehicles overnight. So, in the cases of these cars that are being stolen, they're unlocked, and the fob is either in the car, or it's close enough, the one on Island Avenue the other night was in the house, but the car was parked within 25 feet of the house, and so they were able to start the car. Okay? So, I'm going to call on people to start reminding each other about this. Tonight at 9 o'clock, our Facebook is going to post a reminder to lock your cars, and I'm going to try to start, get some programs started where we can remind people at night to lock your cars, because if you lock it at 9 o'clock, they're not going to steal it at 3 o'clock in the morning. All right? But I just wanted to talk about that. The other thing I want to mention is, item 19 talks about discussing a request from the Board of Finances to seek contractor, was talking to do a comprehensive financial study of all emergency services departments in the town of Madison. I see a couple of different guys here who might be interested in that particular item. I just want to clarify that. The request is for the ambulance service. It's not for all emergency services. In the letter that Lauren got, from which she prepared this item, it did say all emergency services. We've checked with Jean, Jean's the chair of the Board of Finance. I know, I was at the meeting where she told me what she wanted, and so what we're going to be discussing is analysis of the ambulance, not of all emergency services. All right, so if you guys want to take the rest of the night, go for it. All right? And that's my comments. Any public comment?
Captain Ferrante, 71, Cops Road. I'm opposed to the purchase and installation of the surveillance cameras requested by the Information Technology Department that are included in the Board of Selectmen's recommended budget. My concern stems from the fact that the data will be collected and stored by Comcast. Who owns the data that is collected, and how can it be used? These are important questions in an age of advanced facial recognition software. We've already seen municipal police departments in our state share license plate data with ICE at the click of a button. Are we going to end up at some point, headburning through Comcast, sharing data with ICE or other agencies, or opening the door to hacking by nefarious groups? I understand some of the cameras would be installed around the Youth and Family Services Building, where confidentiality of clientele is protected. The Board of Selectmen should have serious concerns about opening the town up to potential liability for breaches of that confidentiality by sharing images and data with Comcast. Defending a lawsuit is expensive. Please deny the IT department's request for funding for surveillance cameras. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren, I have a copy of this. Do you mind asking this?
Any other, say some comments? Okay. Hearing none, moving on. Number five, discuss and take action to approve a proclamation honoring Eagle Scout Luke Conway. I think, Scott, you want to read the proclamation?
Yep. So, the proclamation reads as follows. "Whereas, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Madison hereby proudly acknowledges the outstanding award of Eagle Scout to a member of the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas, throughout his commitment to the community, with a dedication of purpose and a commitment to a high level of leadership excellence worthy of acclamation and praise by this board and the entire community. Whereas, the board gratefully recognizes the tremendous efforts of this young man, is with great pride that the board officially extends their congratulations to this newly awarded Eagle Scout, and wishes him all the best of luck in his future endeavors. Furthermore, by the powers vested in the Board of Selectmen, by the State of Connecticut and the Madison Charter, we, the members of this board, hereby unanimously acknowledge the scouting achievement of Luke Conway, done this day, this 25th day of March 2019 in the town of Madison, Connecticut."
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, discuss and take action to approve a proclamation honoring Eagle Scout Dylan Cancelieri, who is here with us tonight. I'll read it. "Whereas, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Madison hereby proudly acknowledges the outstanding award of Eagle Scout to a member of the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas, throughout his commitment to community, with a dedication of purpose and a commitment to a high level of leadership excellence worthy of acclamation and praise by this board and the entire community. Whereas, the board gratefully recognizes the tremendous efforts of this young man, is with great pride that the board officially extends their congratulations to this newly awarded Eagle Scout, and wishes him all the best of luck in his future endeavors. Furthermore, that by the powers vested in the Board of Selectmen, by the State of Connecticut and the Madison Charter, we, the members of this board, hereby unanimously acknowledge the scouting achievement of Luke Conway, done this day, this 25th day of March 2019 in the town of Madison, Connecticut." I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, discuss and take action to approve a proclamation honoring Eagle Scout Dylan Cancelieri, who is here with us tonight. I'll read it. "Whereas, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Madison hereby proudly acknowledges the outstanding award of Eagle Scout to a member of the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas, throughout his commitment to community, with a dedication of purpose and a commitment to a high level of leadership excellence worthy of acclamation and praise by this board and the entire community. Whereas, the board gratefully recognizes the tremendous efforts of this young man, is with great pride that the board officially extends their congratulations to this newly awarded Eagle Scout, and wishes him all the best of luck in his future endeavors. Furthermore, that by the powers vested in the Board of Selectmen, by the State of Connecticut and the Madison Charter, we, the members of this board, hereby unanimously acknowledge the scouting achievement of Dylan Cancelieri, done this 25th day of March 2019 in the town of Madison, Connecticut." Second that? All in favor?
Aye.
Could we like to take the opportunity to get some pictures? So, you want to come up?
Quick follow-up.
Wait, let's go to the left.
Go in front.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Yes. Thank you. All right, let's, thank you. Welcome. I'll leave it up alone over here. Okay, number seven, discuss and take action to adopt a fair housing action plan and fair housing resolution until all the first electors assign the same. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have two small questions. First question is, we've identified the first elector by name, and I don't know how long this contract's going to be in existence, but I wouldn't, I can't think we have to go back and redo this contract if and when we have a different person in that office.
We're not going to, don't worry.
So, I'm just looking for sure, so we don't have to go back and redo it. My second question had to do with the processes identified here, Tom. I absolutely can't understand from this, if somebody has an appeal they wish to file, and you're going to help them file it, apparently, according to this, but who is it filed with?
CHRO.
It's not us, I hope.
No, no.
We, we use the New Haven Department of Housing, because we do not have a Department of Housing. So, all Tom would do is he would be the middleman between the person making the appeal and getting them in contact with the right people through social services here and then the city of Manhattan.
Thank you. I like that answer.
Okay.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight, discuss and take action to approve a certified resolution and application, small cities program authorizing, application and authorization, and authorizing the first electors to sign and approve documents for the small cities grant.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, discuss and take action to approve a three-section plan pertaining to the small cities grant application for the Concord Meadows condominiums project and to authorize the first electors to sign the same.
So moved.
Second.
I just have one question. Is condominium the right word in there? No, it could just be housing.
Housing.
So, I'm just going to amend that to say--
Concord Meadows housing development, well, housing program.
Right. Discuss and take action to approve a section three plan pertaining to the small cities grant application for the Concord Meadows housing project and to authorize the first electors to sign the same.
So moved.
Second.
I just have one question. Is condominium the right word in there? No, it could just be housing.
Housing.
So, I'm just going to amend that to say--
Concord Meadows housing development, well, housing program.
Right. Discuss and take action to approve a section three plan pertaining to the small cities grant application for the Concord Meadows housing project and to authorize the first electors to sign the same.
So moved, as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 10, discuss and take action to approve a citizens' participation plan pertaining to the small cities grant application for the Concord Meadows housing project and to authorize the first electors to sign the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and take action to approve authorizing the first electors to sign all other certifications and documents as part of the small cities grant application.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, discuss and take action to approve the application for the Historic Document Preservation Program grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
We've been doing this for a while now, right?
Yeah.
Standard kind of part of the process, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 13, discuss and take action to approve abating certain taxes for the engaging heavens ministries in accordance with ordinance 20-2.
So moved.
Second.
Is Colleen here, or Nancy, are you going to talk about it? No? Okay, so we had a request for a tax abatement on a piece of property that was bought by a church on Richborough, I think it was?
It's Richborough, yeah.
In Richborough. They bought the property and then sought nonprofit status after the fact, so they're asking for an abatement of taxes up to that point.
We have a dollar figure that they're asking for abatement for.
Lauren, do you know?
I do not know the exact dollar amount. I know that they are only entitled to abatements up as of the date of acquisition, which is actually what I need the motion to say. So, there were taxes on that property assessed prior to the date of acquisition, and those will not be abated. These will only be abated for whatever would be due after the date of acquisition.
But the date of acquisition, they weren't a nonprofit at that point, where it was not, had not gotten nonprofit status or anything.
Is that the August 15th, 2018 date?
I believe so. And according to Colleen, today, it would backdate to the date of acquisition.
So, you amended to--
So, we could just amend the motion to say--
Back to August 15th, 2018.
Lauren, I have a question for you. Is there any requirement that this property has to be used for the tax-exempt purposes of the church?
Yes. And they have to file a quadrennial, a quadrennial report with the state, which then goes to the assessor. The assessor certifies the exemption has been processed with the state. That's what is in your packet, is once Orietta gets all that information and she confirms that they are entitled to this abatement, she connects her into her system as being exempt, which is what she's printed out for you. And that's actually from our system, showing that she has received everything she needs to certify that they are an exempt organization.
So, they're wanting to use this as their rectory, you know, whatever you call it.
I think that's fine. If they wanted to use it for something different, would we not--
Right.
--be asked to do--
It's not for church purposes, yeah.
Or would we have to change this? Would we ever have to change their status?
We'd change. And other churches in town that own property, if they ever rent them out or anything, they go on the tax notice. When they stop renting out, it becomes used for church purposes again, it goes back to being exempt.
Okay.
So, discuss and take action to approve abating certain taxes for the engaging heavens ministries in accordance with ordinance 20-2, back to August 15th?
Eight, August 8th, 2018. So, importantly, there are two different dates, right? There is what looks like the date of record, which is August 15th, 2018, but then there is another, under exemptions, there is, it looks like, application date of October 1st. So, it's probably important to know which one.
And I think because that's highlighted, that's the date that, it's highlighted on my sheet.
Oh, we didn't get the benefit of that.
Sorry. So, rather than keep amending this motion, why don't we--
Well, that's why Colleen, I think, asked for you to just say as of the date of acquisition.
Okay.
So that we weren't--
Is there an actual acquisition date?
So, as of the date of acquisition.
And that's on their quadrennial, quadrennial report. I don't know why that's so hard for me to say this evening. But the reason why I can't give you a copy of their full report is because it has protected information in it. So, that's why you've just gotten a printout from the assessor's system.
We have a motion and a second discussion. We're changing just the--
Date of acquisition.
Mm-hmm.
Lauren, one final question for me. Is this an appeal directly to the Board of Selectmen? Does this have to go through the Board of Assessment Appeals?
No. So, according to ordinance 20-2, it only needs to come to the Board of Selectmen. We did not prior to this kind of have a procedure in place as to what you guys would receive to confirm for you that you should go on the matter. So, Orietta, the prior tax collector, and I, last summer created a procedure where we would have Orietta certify that they have filed everything that they need to file with the state, and that she could apply the exemption in her computer system. So, that's what we've done here. But the ordinance just says that you need to approve it.
Thank you.
All right.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 14, the following line of transfers are designated as routine and appropriate for approval as a signal action by the Board of Selectmen, so desire. The board member may request removal of any line transfer item from the consent agenda for review and discussion. Motion is to approve line item transfers totaling $72,250. So moved.
Again.
Any discussion?
Do we have, do we know what they're for?
There's a list in your packet.
So, it's-- repairs maintenance.
So, these are line item transfers within people's plans.
Most facilities.
Bill's here, if you want to ask him any questions.
No. Look at that, you look very nice, Bill.
You got a second?
Yeah, we said that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 15, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation from the CNRE fund for $25,000 to continue the planning phase on the Board of Education Facility Study from April 1st to June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
So, I'd like to hear what the money's going to go to.
Sure. We're studying the facilities, the tri-board has been studying the facilities, and we have Colliers International helping us. They've been helping us for, you know, the whole period of time, but the last couple of months, they've upped their game a little bit, and it has significantly put in more time and effort doing analysis, really cost analysis, on what the different options cost. on what the different options cost. So we've been utilizing the planning and engineering funds that we had from LowCap. We had leftover funds and we're running it out. So that's what the money's going to be used for, to continue the analysis. You know, we made an estimate based on what it's been costing the last couple of months. And so I made an estimate on what I thought we'd use for the end of the year. It's a total speculative guess on my part based on historical cost of the last two months.
And it's for a defined period of time?
Oh, yeah. And it's just for this project. So, you know.
So at the end of the time, in the end of the twenty-five thousand dollars, what do you expect the work product to be?
So the committee, the tri-board committee is going to do a presentation on August, excuse me, April first. And I, my expectation-
Maybe you should choose a different day.
August would be.
April first is kind of jonesing.
Good luck. It's the first.
My expectations are the committee's going to make some recommendations. They're going to have to do then some more analysis to fine tune their recommendations, maybe more budgetary numbers, maybe some small analysis. So I think this will get them to, you know, the presentation of what they recommend or what their final report's going to say. They're still going to need some assistance from outsourced, you know, these outsources.
Can I get you through this year and the other years for next year?
The next request would be, you know, we anticipate going, the next step would be not just to the boards, but to the public. And to go to the public, we're going to definitely have to do some more sophisticated analysis for whatever the recommendations are going to be. We're going to have to get into the details of that. And I broke out what the estimate's for and I can go over that in detail on what I looked at, Colliers, on what we think we need for estimating the next step, which we believe will be after, you know, the first of the year, our fiscal year, which would be July first.
So when we talk about planning funds in CIP, it's usually with an eye to a defined project, right, where, you know, we know we want to put a new HVAC system on the roof and we have planning funds to make sure that we're doing it properly. Is that what this money is for or is this more discovery of what that project will ultimately be?
So the first one is the discovery of what we want, we think we're going to want.
Okay.
And then the second one, hopefully we'll fine tune it and be more specific.
Into the options. Deep diving into the options.
So we haven't like done land studies and things like that. We haven't gotten that deep into the options yet. We would like to bring it to the full tri-board to further narrow that down.
But the twenty-five grand in the first piece is the seven options.
It will be going through the different options and the pros and cons of each and analyzing those. Might, we might get it down to two or three and we might go deeper into that. But the expectation would be that that would be more general broad. I think the next phase, July first, would be more specific. We might get it down to one or two and be more specific on the pros and cons on that. You know, right now, I'm guessing on what the options are going to be and I don't have that just a law. If I did, I can tell you specifically. But, you know, the committee hasn't made the recommendation or their final report. And I think it's going to be a fluid sort of thing. They're looking for the input from the, how many public inputs and they haven't made any kind of conclusion. In my, I could guess and tell you what I think, but that's not, wouldn't be probably the right answer.
Probably would be. Is, have you been able to leverage the discovery work that you did as Board of Education on the prior facilities, what feels like the last decade of?
That's why Colliers is so important, keeping the mix.
Yeah, they're huge. And the actual numbers in the background that they have, you know, they just bid out something, you know, last week. You know, we asked them, what's a pool cost? Okay, I'm going to go through the project that we just did, a pool, and see if I can get those numbers. So the answer is yes. We're definitely utilizing all the stuff we had in the past because we, you know, we have the actual maintenance program. We call it, you know, the hundred million. That's, we have that program. So we're using that as part of the analysis, plus additional information that they can provide. So they're, you know, they're definitely an asset to us and I think that they're helping in a big way based on the perspective on what those things cost.
Well, fortuitously Stacy's just walked into the room.
Oh, I was missing you.
I think my, my concerns here aren't so much with the amount of money or its use. It's coming to us a little bit outside of our normal planning structure. And what I want to get assurances on, or at least have us agree to, is that we're not going to go back into the CNRE and try to backfill this amount that we're asking for after we've set the budget. I agree with that completely, yeah. And that if we find that we need to rebuild that reserve fund a little bit, I think my expectation would be that it would come out of the undesignated fund balance, you know, just simply because this is sort of a, an out of left field kind of proposition. But I think the, I don't have any quarrel with the request or the amount of the requests. So it's just that process. It sounds very well thought out by Bill McVinn and telling me that.
Well, I can't take the credit. Committee's been working hard and I've been part of the committee, but a small, quiet part. Really, the Colliers people have been doing a great job and the committee has been putting all the input in, making selections. You know, I'm happy to be part of it, but I just, I'm a quiet person on the side and I, this is fine.
Stacy, do you feel, do you feel comfortable that we're okay on the fund balance?
I do. On the balance in the CNRE fund, I do.
Okay.
Good.
That's all I need here.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number sixty, discuss and take action to approve modifying the twenty nineteen twenty capital improvement program to include planning funds in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the BME facility study for fiscal year nineteen twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, well, so all the comments that I just had, you know, hold for this one as well. I think that- But let's repeat them. No, no, no. So the difference here is, I guess this presumes we're going to have a path identified in the beginning of the next fiscal year for a project.
Yes, yes.
And did, did Bill just spoil, we're going to have a pool involved in this?
No, no. But interestingly, Bruce, if you look at a lot of the community input that we had, either the two public forums or when we had a presentation about, about the needs of the senior center, the issue of a pool came up any number of times. And so as part of our charge to evaluate all the various options, including those that came either as full-blown proposals or as partial proposals from the community, we in fact assessed what the value of a pool would be. So when we do our presentation on April the first, if you all have a question as to what a pool would cost in addition to the proposals that we're presenting to you, the options that we're presenting to you, we'll have that number. I don't think anybody's going to sign off on it, but why not?
Sure.
I'm prepared to support this, but I think it's with the condition that this is going towards a project and not another round of, what do we want to do with the schools? We've been doing that for, even, we've literally for the last five, six years anyways and-
So, can we vote with amen?
No one wants this put to bed more than those of us who've been working on that.
I think we're all violently agreeing there. The other, the other thing that came up in the Board of Finance meeting last week was, I think, the notion that this now needed to go to the CIP. And I would ask everyone here to consider that the CIP is made up of the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen. It is a Board of Finance committee. If the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen are approving it, certainly the CIP can accommodate it in their next natural meeting. But I don't think that we need to solicit an opinion from the CIP or the CIP shouldn't feel like it needs to render an opinion on this. I agree. I think they've already given us their recommendations. To me, it's something that's additional, so. I think the, you know, the process is still well-served here. The tri-board committee has made a request. Both boards have considered it and will approve it. And I think we can just report from there.
I'm in all favor of that.
Me too.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seventeen, discuss and take action to approve calling a special town meeting to authorize the town of Madison to condemn, parentheses, acquired by eminent domain, a portion of that certain property located at in Connolly known as seven oh three Boston Post Road and owned by Rotan Associates LLC. Condom nature will be limited to an easement to run in favor of the town of Madison and EverSource Energy, which is necessary to complete underground relocation of electrical wires.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Second.
Really?
They refuse to talk.
Okay.
We have approached them. We've talked with them. They are standing firm that they refuse to cooperate any further. So this is our only-
Tom, are you able to discern what they would like to see happen?
Or they just won't speak to you at all?
No, 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 they're talking. They talked to EverSource. They told EverSource they want something that EverSource cannot put into their, they can't, they can't restrict themselves infinitely as to what they can do in that easement. If they need to put a piece of equipment there, they need to put a piece of equipment there. And they're saying, no, we don't ever want you to be able to put a piece of equipment there. So.
Sort of a showstopper, I guess.
Yeah. So here's the alternative. And I think I talked about this last time, but I'll just explain it again. The alternative we have is to bypass all the infrastructure that's been put into the ground there. Go from a piece of what they call a handhole, which is a contraption in the ground where there's wires that get together and stuff. And instead go from there, which is on town property or town right of way, out into the post road, digging. First alternative is to go through the sidewalks where we have already, we just put in. We rejected that. But go out to the street and then dig a trench up the street at a cost that we have not been able to calculate at, you know, at this point. But it's going to be extremely expensive. And the town, and the state is coming through at some point in the spring to repave Route One. So we would have to do this before the state came to repave Route One.
Or we're cutting the rent retard.
Right.
What's the future of the eminent domain process?
Just gives us the ability to utilize the infrastructure that's there. The future is really whatever EverSource needs in the future.
But are we pulling the trigger by saying this, that we can put the equipment there physically tomorrow?
No, no. We're pulling the trigger by saying that we're going to go and take the land, take the property by eminent domain. By the way, the easement, I believe, is ten feet wide.
So it's not-
Yeah. It's, we're not taking out a property. We're not taking their property. We're taking an easement on their property.
Which is on the road anyways.
No, it's in the back of their property.
Back of their property.
Yeah.
And this is the culmination of several years worth of-
Oh, gosh, yes.
Negotiating and different attempts to make the landowner whole on, on the use of their property, right?
Yes. I mean, I was informed by the board today that when we paved their parking lot three or four years ago, a bit longer ago than that, four years ago, it was with the understanding that they were going to grant us the easement. So they've pulled back on their word. And no matter what we've, I believe, and I think I went through this before, we've gone through several different iterations of what we are willing to do to make this acceptable to them and they've refused ever.
Tom, what would be the next step after the town meeting?
We'd have to get a appraisal on the property, on the easement. And then we'd have to pay them, you know, whatever the appraisal is.
Is there a court action involved?
Yeah.
This could be, I'm thinking of your timeline here. This could take a lot of time.
Yeah, it could.
And has the, has the town council weighed in on this in terms of this is the route to go?
No, no, no.
And should, should the town council?
We've been in negotiations for all this time. You know, we're, actually, EverSource told me probably in the spring of last year that the easements were not signed and they need to be signed before we could pull the wires through, which means we can take the polls now. So at that point, we started finding out why the easement wasn't signed and we started running up against these obstacles and we started to deal with them. And Rob, you know, Rob sat here and spoke at the last meeting and, you know, talked about all the different things that we've tried to do to respond to their concerns and-
He was running out of ideas, yeah.
Yeah.
Tom, it seems like we're forced into doing this. I just want to make sure that we have spoken to town council and that this is-
They wrote the wording for the-
That makes me feel better.
Thanks.
Well, this is, this, they, I thought I sent you guys a copy of the whole process. It starts with, yeah. So, yeah, town council has been really involved with this. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, one question on this meeting. It's, I noticed, is it Poulsen? Lauren, is, is that delivered? Is our selectmen's meeting at Poulsen?
Yes. This is your very busy April meeting night. There is this town meeting-
I thought tonight was.
It gets better. There's this town meeting, there is the budget public hearing, there is the Board of Finance regular meeting, and there is the Board of Selectmen regular meeting.
All at Poulsen?
All at Poulsen.
Yes. You're going to be quite a orchestra conductor then. Thank you.
Okay, so number eighteen, I've been asked, Dave said if I want to go to nineteen first, that you guys from the Fire Party, you want to get out of here?
Your choice, whatever. I just want, my house catches on a fire while you go to bed.
Well played.
Aaron Dolch, I'm going to take number nineteen first.
Sure.
Request from the Board of Finance to see contracting with a consultant to conduct the comprehensive financial study of all emergency services departments in the town of Madison.
So moved.
Second. You're amending this, all right.
Right. So what I said in the beginning is what I'm saying now. The request was really to consult with somebody for a comprehensive, comprehensive financial study of the ambulance association. And just in conjunction with the budget request this year for anywhere from one hundred and ten to one hundred and three hundred thousand dollars where we started.
So before, before we get all amended, I'm actually the one who suggested the language, I think. In my capacity as first selectmen last- That was your big decision. This is what happens when you-
I got to stop going away.
When you go away. Yes, you do. So, one, I think it's important to note, this is discussion only. There is no action tonight. Okay? The Board of Finance transmitted a letter to us asking us to take up a conversation and this is us taking the conversation up. I, my logic in broadening the conversation is that I am observing that we seem to be treating emergency services inconsistently in town. We have private partnerships, private-public partnerships with three emergency services organizations in town. And I think that it is fundamentally unfair that we single one out for treatment differently. I also am a little concerned that the Board of Finance is not of one mind in their request of us. At the meeting last week, I asked the clarifying question, you just want us to look at the financial sustainability of the ambulance association? And the answer was not unanimous. The, some of the members wanted us to evaluate the services offered, the equipment on the road, the staffing strategies. Some wanted us to evaluate the financial sustainability of the, of their operating model. So I think the letter is the letter that we got from Gene, but I can't say that that fairly represents all of the individual members of the Board of Finance. Is there a vote taken?
But for the sake of this conversation tonight?
Here's, I'll wrap it up. I'll wrap it up. I think discussing the, the public-private relationship between our emergency service providers and the town is a very natural conversation to happen within the strategic discussion that we're having in the larger sense because by definition it is a forward-looking document. And I wholeheartedly support a, an objective look at how we move forward in a sustainable way with all of our emergency service providers in town as part of the strategic plan. I personally am not going to support a, an initiative that just singles out one group and targets them.
Okay. So in that context, I think what we're talking about though is the fact that the Board, I mean, the ambulance association went to the Board of Finance and to us with a budget request, which was changed, kicked around, negotiated, I mean, a lot of different things. And the number, a final number popped out. And when that number popped out, the request was, but we want to get somebody in here to take a look at this and see how we can, you know, improve it or make it better or whatever. And that was really our commitment when we went to them for the money in the first place. You know, when I started with my budget and went to Board of Finance, or put in my budget request for the ambulance, it was with the understanding that we don't, we don't want to have to do this every year, but we need to get on our feet. We need, you know, we need to fix a couple of things there, get on our feet and move forward. And we were only speaking about the ambulance. We weren't speaking about fire or anybody else. If we want to have that conversation with them, that's fine with me. And I'm happy to have that conversation. But it's not going to be by surprise on Monday night when, you know, on Friday, they didn't know anything about this.
I totally agree with that, Tom.
You know, so that's, that's really where we're coming from tonight. It's, it's just about the ambulance.
I think the whole basis of the conversation was about helping the ambulance.
Yeah.
Staying the ambulance services in town.
Staying in the ambulance services in town and needed to solve that problem.
Well, yeah, yeah, so, we're starting a discussion here, we're not, we're not deciding anything here, and... But, but since you mentioned it, you know, the ambulance association is being asked to continue to spend down its, its cash reserves. And we're not asking any other public-private organization to do that. We're a little bit acting like we don't understand how they make their money, right? And they are different from the fire department, right? Fire department doesn't send you a check after your house burns down.
Bill.
A bill.
Nice.
You know, the ambulance is going to, as part of, as part of medical care, is going to bill your insurance company or, or whatever. More often than not, it's Medicare, and under those rules, the amount that they can be reimbursed is fixed. We know what it is. We know that they can only collect 55, 60% of their real cost back in, in charges. There's no amount of investigating that's going to change that reality.
Right.
So I, I don't think that we should pretend that we don't understand what the problem is. We don't understand what the long-term solution is, but just like we know the library can't support itself year over year, we know that the ambulance is going to need subsidy, just like the fire department needs subsidy. That's why I bring it back to, why are we treating them any different? So, in the context of...
But I think in fairness, in this situation, the ambulance has come to us, and we've been collaborating quite a bit over this last year, and it's come to us and asked for help too, so I think there's, there's a need to look at this operating model a little closer. And I think we've come up with some creative ways to help them.
So I, I'm all for a bigger discussion as part of our strategery. But I don't think... That we...
Is this house burning yet?
We should go down a path of, 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 of doing something special for the ambulance association.
Okay. Point made.
Do we need to open the agenda for just solving the ambulance problem here? We're not going there.
We're not going there.
Because we don't know, right?
I'm still, I'm talking to one guy, we've got to find a couple more people.
Rationalizing the vendors.
Yeah, well, you know, getting, getting...
Yep.
Perfect.
And we recommended 150?
160.
160.
We recommended 160.
I heard the Board of Finance is at 110.
Right.
And they've cut it to 110.
Correct.
Right.
You heard that, right, Sam?
As a contingency for one year until the study was performed.
So...
Do you want to get in?
There we go, ask a question.
Yes, you are.
So, could you define emergency services? Is it just private-public partnerships, or is it everybody, all the emergency services for town? Police, emergency management, fire marshal's office?
Well, I guess, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the two fire companies and the ambulance association, but if I'm thinking too narrowly, then you can certainly correct me.
Well, I think if you want to evaluate emergency services, you do everything. It shouldn't be singled out to any individuals.
You make a fair point, you make a fair point, and, and I think just it agrees with my bigger strategic conversation. Right, what is, what is the townwide plan for emergency services?
Emergency shelter.
Don't go there.
That would be underneath the emergency management. I just think you're going to end up opening up a big Pandora's box, but I don't have a problem walking down that road.
Well, I think, I think this strategic plan is...
You can guide us, Sam.
But if, if we can chart a course for the next 15, 20-plus years on how we're going to partner, then I, I think that it's, it's worth having that conversation.
Absolutely.
It's just like trying to figure out how we're going to partner with the library, I mean, it's all the same thing. Are you done?
Yeah. Anything else? Good. Number 18, discuss budget requests from Director of Planning and Economic Development.
Thank you, so, um...
Just let me preface this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
David, come to me in the, in the course of doing our budgeting. We went through, and we were, you know, kind of doing some horse trading and some things. And we arbitrarily took a person out of Dave's department that had been there before.
This dude retired, right?
Right, so if he lost part of a person, we took the rest of it away. And so, and so he came in and said, you know, it doesn't really seem fair, and I said, yeah, I, I agree, and that was my bad, so... So Dave, and I think I've talked to you guys each about this.
Yeah, we had a conversation on budget work stuff.
Right, but, but we wanted Dave to just come and...
Yeah, just...
Just a refresher too, before we get in there, did we add it or did not add it?
We did not add it.
We did not add, yeah.
That's why he's here.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
Those would be an additional on that.
So, yeah, so I, I submit, Bob Cookta, the Inland Wetlands Officer, retired in January. We restructured kind of temporarily, but, you know, evaluating maybe for the longer run by adding responsibilities to the zoning enforcement officer position. I submitted an additional budget request to actually change Bob Cookta's vacated position into a full-time position to, one, support the zoning and inland wetlands officer, to recognize some of the additional responsibilities that are coming through my office with, you know, additional committees, bike and pedestrian committee. I'm staffing two committees that meet on either side of you right now. We have Sustainable Connecticut Program, there's a number of things that my department's working on.
Saying you're busy.
Yeah, we need resources for. And also in talking to Deb Malardo, she suggested if you want to get a quality candidate, she thinks you need to hire full-time, because I was also looking at it from a succession management perspective. The zoning enforcement officer is probably a year or two away from retirement himself. I was trying to get someone on board to train and then to take over. So that was the original request. I was asked to submit the entire package as an additional budget request. I think when you guys decided not to grant the additional request, you cut out the position entirely. So what I'm asking you tonight is to just restore the line item I had for the former inland wetlands officer position. So it would be 20-hour-a-week position, and it's $36,000. So not adding anything, basically fund me as it was funded this year. And in talking to Stacy, if that's a problem at this point in the budget cycle, I'm willing to have it carried as a contingency line item where I have to come back before both boards, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, in order to get permission to fund it. If that makes things easier, I'm happy to do that. But I do need the ability to be responsive in terms of how it's working out with the dual role position, and to be able to be responsive if the zoning enforcement officer says, hey, this isn't sustainable, I can't do this inland wetland role as well, I need to be able to hire someone to take that over.
What was each one of the requests, these, half of this, 23, 30, 36?
So 36 was in this current fiscal year allocated for 20-hour-a-week position.
So Dave, the actual increment to the budget by this request is what?
It should have been zero, truthfully, I mean, I'm not asking for any resources that I don't have now.
That's a good point.
I heard the Board of Finance discussed this as well. Was their conversation in favor of this and not in favor of this?
They're looking for you guys, I, you know, I've been trying to speak with Tom, I certainly didn't want to go around anybody in the process. So they're looking for you guys to make a decision on this. If your guys' decision is no, that's going to be their decision. If your decision is that we can, we can fit this back into the budget, I guess I still have to advocate for it as the next step.
We just have to discuss, I'm sure we're not taking action, right?
So are, are...
It's just a discuss.
I know, I'm going to...
The net add to the budget is 48, 919?
No, 36.
Well, it's either 36 for the 20 hours or 48 for the full time, so...
Yeah, it's a little, I don't want to make this too complex of a conversation. Deb Malardo had budgeted, in her budget, in the human resources budget, an increase in this current fiscal year for John Delora to potentially assume, you know, a dual role. And because we anticipated Bob potentially retiring, he's been talking about it for a couple of years. So she had the forethought to budget that. She has a similar amount of money in next fiscal year, I think it's around $8,000, in one of her line items to, you know, help pay John's increase. So technically, in my budget, it would be $36,000 like it is this fiscal year, but 8,000 of that, you know, could be taken away and taken out of Deb Malardo's budget. So basically, it could be a $28,000 difference in the overall budget.
Heard what you said, I need to ask Stacy.
Sure.
Stacy, what's the increment if we say yes?
Okay.
And what are we saying yes to? Are we saying yes to 48, or are we saying yes to 37?
That's what I was asking, that's what I want to understand.
So, just to talk with Dave, so we can talk together, the 36,000 was what Bob was historically budgeted for?
Correct.
Correct.
20 hours.
And that was just the piece that was included in your budget, not the tree warding?
Correct.
Okay, and does that, that 36,000 include the amount that John Delora received?
No, so he received basically around the $8,000 increase, so I...
So the 36 minus the 8 is what you're asking for?
Yeah, but I don't know that his 8 is budgeted, I think that's budgeted in Deb's budget. That's fine.
I think John Delora is budgeted for the increase, including...
So then take the 8 out, and the difference is what I'm asking for.
So 28,000.
Yeah, I'm not asking for anything additional from what I have this fiscal year.
So you're looking for 28,000 for a part-time person?
What I'm saying is I had 55 man-hours to deal with zoning and inland wetlands. And now, in the budget as proposed, I only have 35 man-hours, so that's a 30%, 33% hit, you know, for me to do the same job, and it's just not possible. So something needs to...
Stacy, I'm still not sure what you said.
So I believe by Bob Cookta retiring, he had made $36,000, so he's retiring. We took 8,000, distributed that to John Delora, which, which leaves another 28,000 that is not included in the budget anywhere. And I believe Dave is looking for that 28,000 to...
Thank you.
Budget for part-time.
No, I hear you.
And John will still be doing the work that he got the raise for?
Yes, yeah, so John had taken courses to kind of help fill the inland wetland enforcement officer role. I envisioned him as kind of the head zoning wetlands guy. If you read my additional budget request, I was looking for someone to back that position up, go out in the field, look into complaints, basically add another resource. There was a lot of benefit to having Bob and John work together on a lot of these issues. So I'm looking to kind of reestablish that ability in my department. I don't think John's going to be able to do it all on his own. And, you know, I'm staffing an additional commission, Bob used to staff the conservation commission, I'm staffing that now. So it's just, it's a lot, truthfully.
Joe, if you had your draw, does the 48 would be the right answer because...
Yeah, but I'm not asking, I'm not asking for that, I, I know that you guys had discussed that, and that's, so I'm, I'm just asking to stay whole.
Stay whole.
Yeah, I, you know, I, just to be...
So I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to open the agenda to discuss and take action on the budget request from Director of Planning and Economic Development.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I'd like to make a motion that we discuss, we take action on the budget request, just heard from Dave Anderson, Director of Planning and Economic Development.
In the, in total of 28 grand?
28,000.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, thank you.
And Dave, honestly, you know, that was one of those things that the process kind of just fell through, and we...
Yeah, I think what happened was I, I presented at a joint meeting, and I got a favorable response. And I didn't sit through all your meetings. And when it got discussed, I wasn't present and didn't have an opportunity to, to talk about it, so. Lesson for me, I guess.
Thank you. Number 20, update on the town planning process. Say it, Dave.
No, this is the overall planning item that Al asked for, so the strategic plan, CIP, tri board facilities, any of those current plans, and you have no words.
Well, we had a strategic plan session tonight where we went over more progress. I think we, I think we made some progress tonight in terms of getting closer to a finished product or, you know, a draft for people to look at in public hearing, so...
Agreed.
That's where we stand with the strategic plan, what were the other plans?
CIP, was it?
The CIP, the tri board facilities, anything else we feel that you need to discuss?
The tri board, you mean, April 1st, right? You guys got a report on CIP, pretty much?
CIP's been submitted, so I don't think we need to really submit, I mean, it's just the next year's process, but I don't think we need to.
Okay.
What was the best basis of your request, it was more the, the bigger planning process?
We have three planning processes going on, yeah.
Academy, strategic plan, and tri board.
Just to kind of call that out, and you could...
Yeah, I think as long as Kirk's here, he can just give us a short update on where the tri board group is, and then I can report on the academy.
Well, I think at this point, I think at this point, at this point, we have a set of options that reflect what we've heard from the public, including full-blown proposals from some of the public. To Bill's earlier comment, Colliers has been working very diligently with us. To Bruce's question earlier, we have drawn on some of the previous work that they had done with respect to other proposed reconfigurations of the school district. So tomorrow, no, after tomorrow, thank you, on the 27th, we will have all of the proposals outlined, all the options outlined, we'll have fairly good cost numbers associated with them, not full-blown cost numbers down to the last detail, but fairly good ballpark numbers. And then we'll be ready to make our presentation to all three boards, Selectmen, Finance, and Board of Education on April the 1st. And then get the feedback from the members of all those boards with respect to which options they find that they think are the best to bring to the community. And the costs associated with them. Recognizing that once that has happened, then we'll need to, we'll need to do further work to fine-tune those, those, those numbers. And then we need to bring it to the facilities committee and the Board of Education, and then to the full Board of Education for a final recommendation to the first selectmen and to the Board of Finance, and then to the town. And that is when the 100,000 will kick in, because then we've got a project that will need to be put in place. Does that, address it?
Sounds good.
And then the academy committee, academy design committee, many of you attended the, the presentation last week. They are on time, on schedule, to finish up and to report to us at our very next meeting with their, I don't know whether to call it a recommendation, but, but they have the architect's conception of what this building would look like, and they have a number from Colliers, which Colliers has a great deal of confidence in. So they will finish their work and then report to us on, at our next meeting. Is that right, Lauren? Yes, the next meeting. And then, then the ball's in our lap. And I was looking at our minutes from our last meeting when we were discussing the town planning processes, and we, we had a lively discussion about the referenda question, one or two. And I don't mean to get into that tonight necessarily. They might, they don't. But I noticed we, large minutes haven't here that we were going to consult with town council before we had any more discussion about the one or the two.
Oh, okay.
And I just want to make sure that's in process, because literally two weeks from now, when we get that report, we may feel a need to make a decision right away.
Yeah.
And so we really should have all the information available.
So there was one other thing we wanted to talk about, I think, there was an email from Phil about canceling the last public hearing?
Oh, yeah, right.
Well, that too, I was going to get there.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were ready for two weeks from now to, to have a full and frank discussion about the referenda question, if, if we're ready to do that.
Okay.
In the meantime, the chairman of the committee, Bill Stableford, is very pleased that the Selectmen using their discretion scheduled another public hearing, the fourth...
using their discretion, scheduled another public hearing, the fourth, on, I think it's April the first. And the committee feels that after three public hearings, there's not much more left to do than a public hearing. They believe they've gotten a lot of input. The number of folks attending these public hearings is beginning to fall off and dwindle. And so they are respectfully requesting whether or not we really need to hold a fourth public hearing in what I believe has been the last four weeks. It seems like there's been one a week. So in their opinion, they don't think another one is needed. And that's up to us to decide.
Yeah, I think right now, I think I'd just like to keep it scheduled just in case. We can always cancel at the last minute. You know, if we cancel it now, then we can't have it.
Oh, because of legal notice?
Right. That's why we set it up, because it takes like three weeks to get a meeting set up, so...
Is there a, we can cancel it two days before?
Yeah, there's no problem with canceling, it's a problem with getting it scheduled.
Just so you know, as they, the Board of Ed have informed you guys tonight, they had a tri-board meeting at six o'clock on that same evening. So I don't know if that changes whether or not you'd like to cancel.
They haven't gone to any public hearings anyway, so...
Well, you can't be into places at one time. We need you there. And if you can't, I mean, I'll...
So we should, you're saying we should cancel it?
I was unaware of the tri-board committee had said you had...
It's on the calendar.
I don't get copied on any of this.
Oh.
It's not on my calendar, I don't get copied.
Yeah, I get mail.
Like this guy, yeah, right.
I know.
The procedure for canceling a public hearing, does that require all of us?
No.
No, we can just make a decision to cancel it, so let's give it a few more days and just make sure. You know, I think you'll be on the safe side.
Tom, can I just ask that you let us know ASAP? Because we'll change the date if you're going to hold the hearing that night. We'll change the date of the tri-board meeting.
Oh, okay.
Because, I mean, the people, there's six members of the tri-board committee on the board, so if we don't get the other members to the meeting...
Great point, yeah. We'll let you know as soon as we know.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, number twenty-one, citizens' comments.
Catherine Brontes, seventy-one, Concordory. Regarding those Academy School public hearings, I don't believe they were videotaped. Or if they were, where is the video? There are no minutes or any sort of recording available on the website of the three public hearings that have happened.
Check it though. Anybody else? Liaison reports, Selectmen comments, I'll start off. We had groundbreaking for the library today.
Very well attended, by the way.
Yep, very well attended. Very exciting to see this all coming together and the number of people who have been involved to help make this happen. The building committee's done an outstanding job in bringing us under budget or bringing us that budget, you know. They're going to, in order to keep the state grant totals, they have to spend more money.
Yeah, it's an artful balance.
But the fact of the matter is that they've done a great job to get us into that range where, you know, we're looking at not having a couple of extra money. However, just to put it in a pinch for the library, they are still six hundred thousand dollars short. And they started a campaign called the Golden Shovel Campaign, which is a thousand dollars a person to be a member of the Golden Shovel Club. And they're trying to get six hundred people to give a thousand dollars. So I would ask that people consider that as a way to help the library reach their final goal of six million dollars. Anybody else?
I attended the ambulance association meeting. At that meeting, I think they, Sam informed the board that the Board of Finance had cut back on the amount that we had approved. There was some healthy discussion about the need to move forward with their rate of pay as they've come before us before and said that they are substantially below market for their paramedic and EMT services. And coincidentally, in that meeting, one of their longstanding paramedics, one of their longest-standing paramedics announced his resignation, was going to a private provider for substantially more money and better benefits. The board considered the wage increases in front of them and decided that regardless of what the town does, they're going to have to move forward with an increase. And they put a very modest wage increase. Does not get them to a competitive place, but at least it's staffed and they're holding good faith with their staff. So I think they're continuing to do what they can do with all of that.
How off-market are they?
Well, this individual, when I'd be being, if I just talk in round numbers, would it be betraying any trust? So I think this individual was going to see an eighteen thousand dollar increase in base compensation plus benefits. So it's, yeah, I mean, it's tough to ask people to struggle. And how many unfilled shifts do you have now because you can't find? You don't have staff to cover on?
Unfilled, we're still down one full-time paramedic position that we've had for the last fifteen, eighteen months at this point.
The unfilled, you have to do with overtime, right?
Yes.
And so how many of those?
It varies week-toe because sometimes people pick up. So we budget for five out of five a month on the paramedic side, but that's not including people that take vacation or call it sick or, you know, on a personal basis.
And then I'll just report from the Board of Finance.
Oh, good, yeah, thank you.
And there was actually, what I wanted to report on, we've heard in public comment tonight, that there is some concern about the security cameras that we're proposing to put up. And I think the beach pass system that we're proposing to put in place. I'm not qualified to speak on what our expectation of privacy is in public space. But I think the question raised is how the data is managed, how it's reviewed, how it's stored. I think that does deserve a public conversation. I'm imagining there's a threshold where we don't want to discuss security. But I think how we're responsible with the data that we're taking in is a valid public conversation. We should find a way to have that as a board and disseminate it.
I think we can put that as an item on our next agenda.
Yeah.
And there are a couple of things that are easily answered. People are concerned about license plate readers, for instance, with the beach pass system. They're not license plate readers like the cops use. These are license plate readers that only read a license plate and compare it to the database.
So it's the same technology, but tied to a completely different database. It's our own internal database, not...
Which is the same thing we would have here, which we've never sold anybody or, you know, I mean...
Right, we already have the information, we're just collecting it differently. Yeah, so I think, yeah, I think that all deserves...
There are those kind of things that people need to understand.
I think they're fair questions and deserve a fair answer.
If we have Beach Direct come to talk about that though, could we include Chief Drum or somebody from the police as well? Just sort of their, I want to hear kind of both sides of that story. Because I think, I'm going to have Al's update on the police commissioners, but I think it's a worthy conversation, just to make sure the process is aligned.
The Board of Police Commissioners is, they'd like a briefing on the beach pass system as well. Obviously, they're especially interested in what role, if any, the Madison Police Department will have in this. And they're looking for a way to get briefed.
So maybe we can sort of facilitate that briefing, I guess, is where I was headed.
Okay.
Is that anybody else?
Mr. Smith? I apologize, I didn't realize when you asked for citizen comments that it was at the end of the conclusion. One of the things I was just looking at when I was online in reference to a complete study of the emergency services in town, in the late nineties, a neighboring town did a similar study. And two years ago, our operating budget was around a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And because of that study, theirs was over four million dollars. And that's something I really think you guys should contemplate before you make a decision to where you're bound to then provide a service to the town. Because as, you know, obviously, I live in town, two, six, seven, where's my group? It's a substantial number.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to agree.
Salute. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming out, everybody.